We got one so far. We know who that is, right? Okay. Is everybody in? Where's Mr. Willis? Good evening. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
I would like to call the Peoria Public Schools Board of Education meeting for April 24th, 2017 to order. Would you please call the roll?
Mrs. Kostic?
Yeah.
Mrs. Jackson?
Here.
Dr. Davis, committee members?
Here.
Mr. Shaw?
Here.
Mr. Allen?
Here.
Mr. Wilder?
Here.
Here. Thank you. Would you please join me in the... I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which is the hands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. First thing on our agenda are announcements. Do we have any announcements?
We've got two.
All right. Mr. Shaw?
May 11th will be Peoria High School Lions Night at the Peoria Chiefs game at Dozer Park. Fans can catch a pregame interview with Coach Tim Thornton and a PHS player on the video board at 6:00 PM. Peoria High School's state champions football Lions, coaches and players will be introduced from the field before the game, and a member of the team will throw out the first pitch. Come on out to Dozer Park and cheer on the Peoria High School Lions and the Peoria Chiefs. Parents and students can purchase tickets for $7. Look for the link on the Peoria High School webpage. And the second one. Peoria High School Preparatory School for the Arts Students will present the Motown Music Review, "The Soul of the City from the Pride of the City," Wednesday, May 3rd, at 7:00 PM in the PHS Auditorium. PSA Dance, Vocal, Drama, Band, and Visual Arts Students team up for this amazing event featuring soul and R&B music from the 50s to the present. Joining these talented students will be a PHS band alumni, including Walter Harrett II, Dan Sutton, Billy Sutton, Scotty Lawless, and Thomas Jones. Mark your calendar and head to Peoria High School to boogie to the hot sounds of the soul of the city. Tickets are $5 for adults and $3 for children, free to children under 5. Thank you.
I have Ms. Jackson.
Peoria Public Schools will be holding a hiring fair on Wednesday, May 10th, from 2:00 to 6:00 PM at Woodruff Career and Technical Center, 800 Northeast Prairie. Certified teachers, May graduates pending certifications, teachers aides, nurses, and bus drivers can apply at the fair. Principals from each school will be on hand to conduct interviews. The Peoria Public Schools currently are approximately 40 teaching vacancies, including special education, bilingual, ELL, primary school, middle school, high school, and administrative openings. Each candidate should bring three packets with their resume, transcripts and letters of recommendation. Certified staff should bring a sample lesson plan. Manual Academy is going tropical for RME in Miami. The Fourth Annual RME Awards, a highlight of the year for the manual community. This year's RME Awards will be held Wednesday, April 26th, at 6:00 PM. The Popular People's Choice Variety Show, a lot of words, includes musical, entertainment, spoken word, and modeling, in addition to several staff and student awards presentation. Just come out to Manual on Wednesday, April 26th, at 6 o'clock for the annual RME Awards.
You have more than one?
I did too.
You did too, okay. Ms. Kostic?
Good evening. The Woodruff Career and Technical Center Cosmetology, Barbering, and Hair Braiding Services are available to the public on Wednesdays from noon until 4:00 PM, Thursdays and Fridays from noon until 2:00 PM, and the first Saturday of each month from 9:00 AM until 2:00 PM through the remainder of the school year. Walk-ins are welcome. Please call 309-282-6644 for more details. Congratulations to Manual Academy Science teacher Belinda Daly, Richwoods High School Social Studies teacher Tom Hayes, and Peoria High School Step Program teacher Rhonda Smith. Presented the 2017 Russell and Gordon Peters Outstanding High School Teachers by the Kiwanis Club of Peoria. Congratulations to all of those educators. This year's Special Olympics Illinois Heartland Area Six, Peoria Public Schools Track and Field Competition Games will be held next Thursday, May 4th, at 10 o'clock AM at Richwood Stadium. The emcee for the event will be none other than 25 News anchor Tyler Lopez. Students from Jamison, Richwoods, Thomas Jefferson, and Woodrow Wilson will all participate. Save the date on your calendar to stop by and watch our athletes shine. Thank you.
Mr. Wilder?
Good evening. On Wednesday, May 10th, at 10:00 AM at the Peoria Riverfront, 700 Peoria Public Schools' special needs students from 11 schools, including all three high schools, primary and middle schools, Jamison School, and the Developmental Center at Rolling Acres, will walk their 100th mile of the year as a part of the Courageous Pacers Fitness Program. Courageous Pacers is coordinated by Peoria Public School physical therapists, who work with teachers to incorporate fitness activities in their daily classroom routine to improve attention, behavior, and academic success. These students, many with disabilities, have been improving their strength and fitness all year by working toward their goal of 100 miles and lifting 10,000 pounds. On May 10th, they will gather at the riverfront to walk their final mile together. Students will walk starting at Constitution Garden and walk north to the turnaround and back to the Gateway Building. Students win T-shirts and other prizes, then enjoy lunch and games at the riverfront. The public is invited to cheer on these hard-working students. Another one here. Last week was a busy week, and we want to thank everyone that played a part in the great events that were held. Our final parent university was hosted by Hines and Rolling Acres on Thursday night at the Peoria Riverfront Museum. Approximately 400 were in attendance on a beautiful night and took advantage of seeing every exhibit and show that was offered. Approximately 400 middle and high school students had the opportunity on Friday to see a special showing of the movie Hidden Figures at the Peoria Riverfront Museum. The movie Hidden Figures tells the inspiring story of three African-American women who worked as mathematicians at NASA. The remarkable woman affectionately called "Human Computers" broke racial and gender barriers when they launched astronaut John Glenn into orbit February 20th, 1962. Glenn was the first American to orbit the Earth and did so three times in his Mercury capsule, Friendship 7. The special trip was organized by Dr. Jenkins and the community volunteers Jennifer Hawkins and Barb Atkins. 117 incoming kindergarten students turned in their registration materials to be prepared for their first year of school, the district's annual kindergarten fair at Woodruff on Saturday, thanks to Valeska, Principal Katie Powers, and the entire team of volunteers that made the event a success. More than 525 were in attendance throughout the morning and early afternoon.
Other announcements?
The Gerald M. Brookheart Arts and Education Spring Celebration began last week and will run through mid-May. Boogie on down to the Peoria... Did it say really? To the Peoria County Courthouse Plaza between 11:00 AM and 1:00 PM. Peoria Public School performances this week include Keller Primary School on Wednesday and Roosevelt Magnet School and Thomas Jefferson Primary School on Thursday. That's between 11:00 AM and 1:00 PM. The complete schedule of performances is on the Peoria Public School website calendar. We encourage you to take time during your day to enjoy the beautiful spring weather and the outstanding musical performances and visual arts displays by Peoria Public Schools' students.
The Peoria Public Schools Foundation will recognize 22 Peoria Public Schools' 7th grade girls who excel in mathematics at 6:30 PM on Wednesday, April 26th, at the Glen Oak Learning Center. These students will receive the Deirdre Purcell Collins Math Award at the annual Finding Your Path with Math event. Carol Ann Purcell established the Deirdre Purcell Collins Math Award in memory of her daughter, Deirdre Purcell Collins. Mrs. Purcell is passionate about supporting young women with math abilities. She encourages these students to continue their math studies because math knowledge opens so many doors. The award and the event also give the girls an opportunity to apply for a scholarship to attend the Illinois Central College College for Kids Summer Program. More than 250 7th grade girls have received the Deirdre Purcell Collins Math Award since its start in 2007. And young Peoria Public School chess players will gather at Peoria High School this Saturday, April 29th, from 8:00 AM to 4:00 PM, to compete in the Peoria Federation of Teachers K-8 Chess Tournament. The public is invited to observe, and concessions will be available.
Mr. Pedler?
Congratulations to the Richwoods High School Journalism Team, led by Dr. Dan Kearns, who placed second in the state sectionals at Illinois State University, only nine points behind Washington High School. Eight students qualified to advance to the state competition this coming weekend at Eastern Illinois University. And finally, Superintendent Dr. Sharon Damealan Karat will give the State of the Schools address at the Peoria Chamber of Commerce at their breakfast meeting on Wednesday, May 3rd, at the Hotel Pier Marquette. The event begins at 7:30 AM, and the deadline to RSVP is tomorrow. This has been a year of significant change and growth for Peoria Public Schools, and we encourage you to attend the breakfast and hear of the many truly positive initiatives underway and resulting progress on our strategic plan. Visit peoriachamber.org to RSVP for this event. Thank you.
Dr. Nowitzki, do you have any announcements?
No. Okay. We are pulling number six, which is the awards and recognition for a doctor's school, until possibly next board meeting. So that one will not be on this. So the next thing on the agenda is the community contribution. Over the next several meetings, we will recognize our high school alumni associations for our community contribution awards. Our alumni associations do great work in keeping a positive morale for our high schools, supporting our students and staff, and keeping us connected to the alumni. Peoria High School was founded May 5th, 1856, in Peoria, Illinois. Peoria High School is the 17th oldest high school in the nation, and the oldest west of the Allegheny Mountains. A school with as proud and diverse a history as Peoria High needs a support organization such as diverse and proud of the school's heritage. According to the website, the Peoria High School Alumni Association was founded in 1990 and strives to be a financially sound, well-endowed organization with strong leadership and informed, involved, and supportive members dedicated to improving student potential for lifetime success. The Alumni Association has handed out more than $587,000 in student scholarships, maintains several halls of fame, including academics, distinguished alumni, and athletics. It has purchased a van for Peoria High, Peoria High School students' activities, helped renovate the school auditorium in 1856 room, and has even provided funding for summer arts music camp. At this time, I would like to invite the officers of the Peoria High School Alumni Association to the podium to introduce themselves. And share a little bit about the organization that I didn't already.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Kate Newmiller Skierman. I'm a proud graduate of Peoria High School, the class of 1986, the 15th member of my family to attend Peoria High School, and it is an amazing high school, full of amazing students and amazing alums. Two of them are my fellow officers with the Alumni Association.
Laverne Wilson, and I'm the administer in the alumni office and have been there for about 14 years, and I'll probably be there until they kick me off. But I love the job because I'm constantly meeting up with alumni and helping with reunion planning and events that we donate for. Thank you.
I'm Ken Pope, graduated from Peoria High School in 1963. My mother was also a Peoria High School graduate. I've been on the Alumni Association Board for several years now, and for the last five or so years, I've been treasurer, and it's been a pleasure to try to help along this funding that provides so many scholarships for so many worthy students.
Thank you. Are there any other members of the board other than the officers in attendance?
No, I think we're tonight.
All right. Thank you. On behalf of the Board of Education, Dr. Karat has a small token of our appreciation for the work that you continue to do on a long tradition.
Ms. Kate, Laverne, Ken, thank you so much. Just a small token that you could probably hang out and display in the office. So thank you, the renovation, the support. Appreciate it so much.
Thank you very much. It's a pleasure.
Thank you. We'll continue to do so. You too.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is student recognition. Elizabeth?
Tonight, we have two student recognitions. The first is for an individual student. Kimberly Lee, a junior at Richwoods High School, recently submitted artwork in the 2017 Congressional Art Show. She won first place for Illinois's 18th District. Lee won for her acrylic painting, "Fortuity," depicting Japan's Mount Fuji and cherry blossoms. The painting uses elements of Art Nouveau and stained glass paintings. Lee's painting will be displayed along with winners from other congressional districts in the tunnel of the US Capitol. She also won a trip to Washington DC last year. She was runner-up in the Congressional Art Show, and her painting hung in Congressman LaHood's district office. Please help me congratulate and welcome Kimberly Lee.
And next we have the Young Authors winner. Ms. Lindquist is going to do that.
Our second recognition brings to the spotlight a group of students who submitted their work to young authors. Tonight, we will be recognizing those that achieved overall district winner status, honorable mention, and most meaningfully illustrated. District Literacy and Social Studies Coordinator Marcy Steele will introduce the students in attendance tonight while I hand out their medals.
Good evening, President Ross, board members. I liked, I really enjoyed giving these out last year, and after reading all those, I thought there was no way that the kids could top the manuscripts that I read last year. And there were a few this year that, as ice cold as my heart is, I felt it melt. So one of them, and some of the people in here know me, so they know that's true. I am going to invite a special pair up to read a book at the end, okay? So we're going to start... There were 20 schools that participated this year. There were close to 2,000 manuscripts that were written across the district. From those, at each building, each building has a tough task of determining which ones are their top manuscripts that they have to submit then to us. 120 were submitted to the district office. So of those 120, we have for you tonight the top 10 of 2,000 manuscripts, okay? So we're going to start with the most meaningful illustrated, and we're going to do the K-2 band with the title Sleepy Princess Violet. It was a six-year-old student, a first grader at Keller, and her name is Avery Whalen. This young lady took the time to, I guess they were her dolls, to stage her dolls for all the different events in her plotline, take pictures of them, and insert them in the most appropriate place in the book. It was so professionally done, but you could tell, I mean, it was children's toys, photos that matched the plotline. It was impressive, really. It truly was. The 3rd through 4th grade band with the book Magical Creatures, an eight-year-old 3rd grader from Whittier, Katsumi Engel. This young lady's an artist, let me tell you. She had these very elaborate drawings with full color of phoenixes, serpents, dragons, unicorns, fairies. It was, it was really cute, actually. Okay. These are the honorable mention manuscripts. These are the ones that just had to be recognized. We can only send so many kids to Illinois State University for the big conference that they do, but there's always some that are just special and have to be recognized. So we'll start with the K-2 category again, with the manuscript Myla and her super sidekick, Pet Posega, an eight-year-old 2nd grader from Whittier, Melana Ankrum. The 3rd through 4th grade category with Martina Hermatina and Three Budds, a 10-year-old 4th grader from Woodrow Wilson, Kiara Hodge. The 5th through 6th grade manuscript, this one's different, so I'm going to tell you a little bit of detail about this one, with the manuscript A Child's Imagination, an 11-year-old 6th grader from Calvin Coolidge, Adriana Beck. I've got to give her some credit because she took the risk and submitted a poem. Normally, we're used to elaborate stories winning, but this was a very well-crafted poem with rhythm, rhyme scheme, and a very, very fantastic message. So it was very well, very well done. And the last of our honorable mention was a 7th and 8th grade student, or band, with the manuscript Sayonara, Farwa Wasig. Did I say that wrong? Oh, good. 13-year-old 8th grader from Washington. Okay. The next four students are the students who will represent District 150 at the conference at Illinois State on May 20th. We're going to start in the reverse order, so from our 7th and 8th grade band, the manuscript War. It's not done, I could tell from reading it, but it's a fantastic start, and it's very detailed. A 14-year-old 8th grader from Rolling Acres, Matthew Dole. The 5th and 6th grade band with the manuscript A Nutcracker Gone Wrong, a 12-year-old 6th grader from Washington, her name is Isabel Martinez. Then from the 3rd and 4th grade band with the manuscript Kittens Iceberg, a 10-year-old 4th grader who seems to get recognized every single time I'm at the podium for, she's, child's brilliant, Kathryn Kamisaki. And I've got to tell you before we start clapping for her, she's a 4th grader, and I don't know if you can see all these pages, single-spaced, maybe size 10 font at times, with character development, foreshadowing, dialogue. I mean, this is, it's unbelievable, really. So Katie, you want to come on up? All right. And then last but not least, because this one is probably the one that really was amazing, from the kindergarten and 2nd grade band, so the most students compete for this grade level band, with the manuscript Our Friends Are Equal. I'm going to pop this out of here, too, if I can. From Charter Oak, five-year-old twin kindergartners with Macklin and McCoy, Cobage, right? I would like you guys to come on up, and your mom, Melody, and I would like them to read their book to you real quick, if you don't mind, okay? So you want to give that stuff to mom and dad real quick, and we'll have you guys read your book. It's short and simple and just should probably be published, okay? Okay, so.
Our friends are all equal. We love our friends. This book is dedicated to Miss Catherine and Miss Nissen. This is my friend Emma. She is really small. Emma can't grow, but she's still my friend. This is my friend Maya. She needs a wheelchair. She can't walk, but she's still my friend. This is Rita. This is my friend Rita. She is blind. She can't see, but she's still my friend. She can't see, but she's still my friend. This is my friend Morgan. She can't speak, but she's still my friend. We reach the doorknob, we reach the doorknob to open the door for Emma. We push Maya in her wheelchair at the park. We hold Rita's hand to walk across the street. We learn sign language to talk to Morgan. Our friends are all respectful. Our friends are kind. Our friends special. Our friends are special. Our friends are different. Our friends are all equal. The end.
So, I saw tears in the room, too, so, yep. So, now you know why I wanted them to read that book to you. But these are all the top 10 representatives from 2,000 manuscripts, so let's give them one big round of applause, please.
I wanted to ask all the parents, before you leave, all the parents of the children, or there are teachers and principals in the room, everybody's leaving, I want to recognize the parents of the children. I gave you a couple minutes before we go into the next item. Yeah, I did ask for the principals, Mr. Mr. Poe, Mr. Turner, thank you all. Ms. Z, thank you. They're all leaving. She was there. All right, thank you. Next on our agenda, district presentations, and we'll start with the organ donor drive update.
I can't believe I have to follow those two little kindergartners. Good evening. To give you an update on the organ donor drive that we had with parent-teacher conferences, we did sign up 17 new donors. Now, while that number may not seem very high to some people, keep in mind that every one donor can save 25 lives. So, with what we signed up, that's 425 possible lives that will be saved. I will tell you that a young man by the name of Marcus Weldy, he's mother is waiting a heart transplant. He not only worked the evening, but he decided he was going to keep that desk going the next morning, and he signed up the majority. So, I'm hoping that she is able to get an organ here soon. I would like to talk about my plans for the fall conference that I will be forwarding to all of you. We're planning on going bigger. We'll have plenty of time to plan this one. I'm going to be applying for grants to purchase incentives, a raffle for possibly a Kindle or an iPad for people who sign up, but also people who are already signed up, because we did find, especially at Lidenburg, that the majority of the people that came through the door already were signed donors. We also want to be able to purchase incentives, banners, and giveaways. My goal is five new donors for every school. Looking for volunteers, and we've been told that we can rely on the key clubs, junior ROTC, and the IB program at Richwoods. We're also looking at medical staff, medical students, and other people to be able to come out and talk to people about what this is. Also, I'm going to be asking for volunteer captains for each area to assist me with volunteers and transporting materials. There will be a summer training that we'll be holding. One of the organizations that I'm working with is going to handle that training, because they have designated Peoria as a high-risk area, so they really want to up the training. And I was a little disappointed at only 17, but they said that that's really phenomenal for a one-night event. So, I will be sending all of you information, my chairman's planning guide that I'll be using. I believe I did send to a lot of you what my vision is in the future for this. When I lived in Colorado, we had something called the Nine Health Fair, and I ran one of the bigger sites where we had mammograms, blood work that was taken, all kinds of exams, and that really is my long-term vision. If we can offer those services in the high-risk communities at some of the bigger schools, I think we would really affect a lot of people. So, I thank you. I thank Chris Copeland for his help. Mike Plunkett is very pleased, he's doing very well. He's going to be a part of the Memphis to Peoria St. Jude's Run, although he's not running like he thinks he's going to. So, again, thank you to all of you, and if you have any questions, please let me know.
Thank you. Any questions of the speaker? Ms. Hickman? All right, thank you for the information.
Thank you.
Next is the summer meals update.
Good evening, Dr. Kraut, President Ross, all of our distinguished board members and administrators. I have a little bit more for you tonight than summer meal program. I promise I will touch on that. But I took a moment to kind of look back at our last five years of this partnership that I've been here for, here in Peoria Public Schools, and have just a little PowerPoint that I'm going to share with you. One of the first slides has some numbers on it. I'm a numbers guy. The reason I wanted to throw this up here first is I wanted to take a look at what we've been able to affect as far as a change in supplying our students with meals, whether it be the summertime after school, during the school day, certainly with breakfast and lunch and our grab-and-go. These numbers, I've worked in several school districts in three different states, and these are phenomenal. We have done a great job here in the city of Peoria, finding avenues, new ways, new programs to deliver meals to kids. And when I say "we," I mean, you know, a lot of people in this room. I wanted to show this first and then kind of step back and take a moment to recognize the efforts. This isn't all about Sadekso, it isn't all about Mark Streamer and Robin Xdam. This has been a collaboration to achieve this, and it's been everyone from Mike McKenzie and Gabby Klein, who I work with every day, in collaborating on things and developing, you kind of have to customize programs for every school district. They've been an integral part of this and a joy to work with. And Tanya Jenkins, who has been hugely supportive in moving things forward with us with the summer program. When I was working on the P3 program, I couldn't figure out what to call it, what to brand that, after-school program for the high schools, and Tanya was in my office. I said, "You're a creative person." Help me. Within two minutes, she came up with the Peoria Power Pack. And just her creativity, and we really enjoy working with her on parent university. She's allowed us to do our Snack academic classes. It's been great. And, you know, we've done, we've raised a lot of revenue from reimbursement for the district through these meal increases that has allowed us, with Mike's guidance in accounting and to reinvest in onsite cooking programs. And I'm kind of getting into a lot of the different things, the slides that I've got here. But Dave Myers, his staff, Rick Day and Jeff DeVores have been instrumental, and all of his team, plumbers, custodians, the HVAC guys have all been instrumental in renovations, in hooking up new equipment. I could go on and on, even Chris Copeland in helping to promote things and get the information out to the community, and Barb Drew, as well as Dr. Kraut, her support in helping to move things forward and, you know, that vision moving and continuous progress. So, I just wanted to take a minute to, before I jump into the nuts and bolts, and it's pretty quick here to go through this, but I just wanted to take a moment to thank everyone. This can't be done with a single department, with a single person, and I think we can all be proud with this success. What we've been able to do, some of the key pieces, and this, these are just maybe six or eight different key programs that have been started that have really made a difference. We have gotten all kinds of recognition, both state and federally, for our grab-and-go breakfast programs. I don't think I've ever heard of anyone who has increased the number of meals that we've been able to get into kids' hands, supporting their achievement in the morning. And we've worked closely with the ISBE, they've been great. We've gotten about $50,000 in grants from the Midwest Dairy Association. No Kids Hungry has been a part of this. So, lots of folks kind of pushing in the same direction to make that happen. Renovations of kitchens, we've done about 13 schools now who, when I, prior to my coming here, had just been satellited to. This is a part of a quality food improvement initiative. It's been great, and we've got probably another 13 in our back pocket to do. Some of them we've already started. Wilson Primary is one of them, we're going to be doing Washington, and we'll keep continually improving those programs. We've purchased a phenomenal amount of equipment, refrigerators, freezers, steam tables, salad bars. Actually, the salad bars, most of those came from a grant that we've done. We've gotten, I think, 20, we just got three more, so I think it's about 27 salad bars we've gotten in from Let's Move Salad Bars to schools. So, this is a part of what these, both of these things, both of these programs have been a part of what has driven our improvement in feeding kids. Certainly, the after-school program that we piloted at Peoria, we rolled out to manual, and our next step is to move into the middle schools. The P3 program is doing about 400 meals a day, so that's phenomenal. Our Future Chef Challenge is one of those fun things, supporting students in giving them creative learning environments. We've had the blessing of being able to get those kids onto the Living Well Show every year. That's a collaboration with WMBD and Mark Schutman and that Living Well Program, and that's a lot of fun. Our summer meal programs, which I am to speak to today, is on track again. I started getting phone calls probably about four weeks ago from our partner sites, whether it be the Parks District, we've already lined up their training dates and start dates and what have you. So, the community is actually, we reached out to them initially, now they're reaching back to us each year saying, "Are we doing this again? Can we count on you?" So, that will go on perpetually. It's been a great program. We initially jumped those number of meals accessible, points of service, as well as the number of meals in those first couple of years, but I'm very pleased to see that we're going to have another jump forward with the new summer school program. That is really going to help to drive the accessibility of those meals, as well as those learning opportunities and all of the activities. Snack academics is a fun thing that Dr. Jenkins has allowed us to do at the parent universities. This last one was a lot of fun over at Riverplex that we did a couple months ago. We had a bunch of folks making healthy tortilla wrap kind of desserts. They just had a, it's a, it's a hands-on kind of a program designed for, you know, showing folks how kids can make some things simply themselves, snacks after school, as well as getting tips for how to, more fruits and vegetables. That really is the mission, on changing the eating habits of our youth, and we've touched on several different techniques for that with our classes. Physical safety, one of the people I didn't thank is Robin Xdam, my assistant food service director. She's done a phenomenal job in improving the food and physical safety within this district. The health department scores are just one indicator of that. We have so many that are just perfect 100s, or maybe a 98 or 97 is probably the bulk of the scores that we see. We also have third-party audits we do very well on, but it is an ongoing thing, it's kind of a cultural thing, to instill the zero harm. You know, we want everyone to be safe, we want to make sure that our students are safe, and, you know, we've got some older equipment, some older buildings that we're improving all the time, but that does create a challenge for a lot of our folks, and they do a really great job with what they have to work with. And again, we're continually improving that. A to Z salad bar is another fun thing that we do. I'll be meeting with Keller PTO, and I hope to put something together with them and build that, that base of parents to help us with some of these special events. But the A to Z salad bar is an opportunity for kids. I'm kind of a hawker in front of those A to Z salad bar lines, saying, "Try something. You don't know if you'll find something that you'll love for the rest of your life." And the kids do have a lot of fun with it. Even the staff come in, and "What is that?" You know, whether it be something like hickama or starfruit or ugly fruit, we just have some really strange stuff. The one we did last year over at, over at Calvin Coolidge, we actually had, oh, excuse me, we did this event over at Franklin, Calvin Coolidge cheerleaders came and did like a pep rally for it. But we had all kinds of staff, just couldn't believe some of the weird fruits and vegetables. And again, the kids got to try something you don't normally get to try, and get excited about eating healthy and having healthy lifestyles. And that's about it. Any questions for me this evening?
Board members have any questions?
All right, thank you very much.
I just want to comment on the phenomenal cooking class you have over at your, at Woodrow. It's just, you know, they do great work there.
We enjoyed being a part of the startup of that, and I really enjoyed being one of the mentors for the last couple of years with the management team, and they have done a great job. It's a, it's a great experience for me, working with the kids, and they really, really excelled. It's fun.
Thank you.
All right, have a nice evening.
We have another presentation due, we? Program committee update.
Good evening, Carla Eman, and I'm here with Dave Myers as the Director of Operations and Maintenance, and we are going to...
and Maintenance, and we are going to report out on the Program Committee, the kind of the third area that we've been working on. And we have our recommendations tonight. We want to show this slide again. It kind of shows our current budget status, and that we're still working towards that 4.3 million, but our focus tonight is on O and M, operations and maintenance, with our $1.5 million deficit. What we have come up with, we went ahead and formed a subcommittee, again, headed by both Mick Willis and Dave Myers, and we came up with close to $1 million. They reported back, and we had an overall discussion within the Program Committee, and I'll turn it over to Mick at this time to go ahead and go through the details of that.
The recommendations fall in three general areas. One, you'll recall we passed the County School Facility Sales Tax back in November. That gave us monies to take care of our facilities. That same process allows us to relieve our operating costs in the maintenance area. And so those lines where you see the asterisks, those are the lines where the County School Facility Sales Tax is really affording us some relief. So that, that is one aspect of our recommendations. Another place where we're making some recommendations is through restructuring. We've had a few positions that have become vacant, and as they become vacant, we challenge ourselves with, can we get the work done by restructuring? Long story short, is we believe that there are four places where we can accommodate the work, restructure some activities, and so you'll see an FTE recommendation, reduction for being recommended tonight. A third area has to do with surplus properties. There are some operational costs connected with some of our surplus, well, our surplus properties. There are also, there's also worth there. So we believe it makes sense for us to take advantage of some, some opportunities there, and that would provide some savings and generate some revenue as well. And then a fourth piece is, in a couple of places, take a look at how we're doing, how efficient we are, how things are working, with an eye toward making some recommendations if we see, in fact, that there are some opportunities for that. Those are in the areas of space usage and also in the area of copy center usage. The sum total of the recommendations for the operations and maintenance area is $921,520. That is short of our one and a half million dollar target. At this time, we believe that's as much as we can do. Without question, that makes a significant dent in our budget operations and maintenance for the coming year. I'd be happy to answer any questions you have, but that's a highlight of the discussions that we had and conclusions that we came to.
Questions from board members? We've done a fantastic job. Nobody has any questions. Is there more?
Mr. Willis, so the, the one-time revenue that we're talking about from surplus properties, so am I reading it correct that our, I guess, our structural savings, what we would count on year over year is more like 721,000?
That's correct.
Okay.
And that concludes our update.
Thank you. The rest of the story. And so the next on the agenda is the Program Budget Update, the three-tier system overview of comments. Mr. Willis?
When we did the survey, had the survey out for a couple of weeks, we had a number of questions that we've reviewed with you in Friday updates and in prior meetings. We had one open-ended question at the end that we got over 1,400 responses on, and we've spent time since our last board meeting basically calling through those responses to try to tease out what the respondents were trying to communicate to us. And so I have here a very high-level overview. Essentially, the responses totaled 69 pages when we did a full printout of that. We kind of condensed that into a 20-page report, and this is the executive, the two-page executive summary that's condensed from the 20 pages, that's condensed from the 69 pages. So there basically are five areas that we kind of teased out as areas where comments were made and thoughts were shared. One had to do with student safety, student care, student well-being. And here, there were comments and thoughts related to students' extracurricular activities, how darkness might impact students going to, from school, busy streets, how that might impact students, you know, going to, from school, those kinds of things. A second area had to do with just the decision-making process regarding the whole three-tier system. And so we got quite a few comments in that area. So a highlight of the topical areas you find on your left, and then really a kind of a synthesis of those reactions you'll find on these sheets on, on your right. A third area, there was discussion, lots of comments on the impact. And really, here, the, the takeaway had to do with allowing plenty of time for us to implement any change that we might be, be thinking about, and just making sure that we cross our i's and dot our t's as we go through any kind of...
Cross our t's and dot our i's.
Yes.
That too.
My tongue is dyslexic. Extracurricular activities, that was another area. And then we had several solutions and suggestions offered, which we saw as part of that feedback process. Where we got some real valuable input, I felt like, were in the areas of outstanding questions, and we had several comments and, and relative to, okay, where should we go with respect to benefits to student transportation, cost savings, and, and those kinds of areas. And so on the, this particular page and the following page, there were just a litany of, of questions that, that we will, will start with in terms of next steps, because I think it, it gives us what we wanted, feedback on if we are going to do this and, and seriously look at making sure that we take care of everything. You know, what, what do we pay attention to? So next steps, we think, addressing the stakeholder questions and concerns, we had about a page and a half of those questions, and so we see that as a, you know, as a really next set of activities that we would get involved in. Continue to reach out to stakeholders and, and district leadership, really to, you know, kind of tease out best practices and, and just collaborate and coordinate. Who's done this and what has their experience been? I think that's got to be a piece of our next steps, and basically putting together an action plan to, to ensure and guarantee a smooth transition on this kind of change. Those are some of the next steps that we kind of see as part of this process. I think this discussion gives us opportunities to collaborate in one key area where there have been some questions, and that has to do with childcare, before and after-school activities, enrichments, those kinds of things. I think those are some opportunities that this topic really, really presents us with. And so as we look at possible next steps, I think we, we, we look at taking advantage of those places where we could, we could maybe make some impact that, that maybe we didn't think we, we could before. Anyway, I mainly wanted to give you feedback that we received and boil it down so that it is a lot more digestible than 69 pages. I'd be happy to answer any questions, hear any thoughts that you may have, but really wanted to provide you a high-level overview of the feedback that we got to our open-ended question. And I'd like to take a moment to thank all those who provided feedback to us on that open-ended question. I was surprised by the number of survey respondents. I was also surprised pleasantly by the number of people who took time to make comments on that survey, and that feedback and information is truly helpful as we have continued dialogue around three tiers.
Questions?
I have a couple.
And actually, I just picked up, Mr. Willis, on your last comment, as we have discussions around this three-tier system. So how has the qualitative data that you've shared with us now changed your planning regarding the three-tier system? Will it stay the same? Will it be different? How is this affecting your thoughts about how that's going to play out?
I, I think this information basically says, continue to process that topic, and, and I, I think that's, I think that's what we continue doing.
Okay. The, so the shortfall for transportation earlier was 1.4 mil, and your earlier PowerPoint had, there was a slide which actually we did not see, as I recall, that presented three options, the first of which we did see, and I can't recall the details of that. That first option seemed to want to deal with the 1.4 million in its entirety. The other two options looked at that 1.4 million and saw that, and indicated that while we would not be able to do the entire 1.4, we'd do a major chunk of that. And so I bring that up in the context of your, your current O and M presentation, which shows us at a 1.5, almost 1.6 million shortfall, we're able to cobble together about 900 grand, leaving us about 600,000 short. And I'm just wondering, it, what's the difference between the two? If in the first, we were to emphasize the entire 1.4 million at apparently, the, with apparent, an apparent impact on parents that you have just reported, and yet on the O and M, we're looking at 600,000, but I don't see any other options? And I don't see any concerns about the shortfall, other that you're going to want to, you know, you see, are you see where I'm going with this? It seemed we were much more worried about a shortfall in transportation and less worried about a shortfall in O and M, as particular as it impacts the families and parents in our communities.
The, about the only thing left in the operations and maintenance area to address that shortfall is closing buildings. What I'm acknowledging on the operations and maintenance recommendations is that's, that conversation takes a long time to, it takes a while to get through. So I'm, I, I would, I would characterize the O and M recommendations as, as recommendations that acknowledge that discussions about operating less space, those discussions, they, they take time.
So if I'm hearing you correctly, we have fewer degrees of freedom for the O and M. We've got fewer options in terms of, whereas if I'm understanding you correctly, the transportation might have more options than the three-tier system?
The, the transportation area has more options that minimize impact and that are doable. So we had more discussion about those.
Thank you very much.
Other questions? Mr. Walther?
I guess the question I have for you is, and I appreciate the effort that you did for you, I will be submitting a reimbursement for printering, because I did print out the 40 pages of the comments.
It was online.
I know. I still printed out. It was very...
You can't get reimbursed and deducted, Dan.
Thank you. But I guess my question was, and I like where you're going with this, and the next steps of where we're going to address it, but I guess the cut to the chase question is, are you looking at those to try to implement that for next year, or are you looking at that to implement this for the future?
Operations and maintenance?
This. No, no. The transportation.
Oh, we, we haven't, we haven't, I, I, we haven't had conversations about when. What we've done is we've tried to answer questions. In terms of getting information from the community, making sure that we consider that feedback, and, and using that feedback wisely to, you know, to, to, to plan with. And I, I think this is just, what we have tonight is just a piece of that process.
Right. And, yeah, don't forget, Mr. Walther's will make recommendations, and then it's up to the board to decide, right? Whether we proceed or not.
Exactly. No, I was just wondering what the intent, I didn't know if the committee, if you guys had figured it out.
Yeah, the intent then is to continue to have that dialogue, as Mr. Willis said, engage a variety of stakeholders and, and help frame this and provide some guidance and direction. And we'll work also along with the board.
Okay. Thank you.
I mean, if, if, if your question is from a financial sense, would it make, would we be better off implementing a change for 2017, 18, the answer to that question is yes.
Yes.
That wasn't my question, but I appreciate, I appreciate your answer.
Just thought of throwing that out.
Ms. Jackson?
And I guess at some point, in gathering all this information and reviewing and looking at it, we're going to have to get to a point where we say, what are we going to do? And then is, when are we going to do it? So at what, at what point, right now, as we sit here, at what point do you think we'll be talking about, when are we going to, what we're going to do, and when are we going to do it? Is it this year, next year? Is this very long-term? Is this shorter-term? I guess, I, in reading all those, those things we've come, I, I think that there's been some great information on this, on this chart, and I was really pleased with some of the items that were, that parents and people that got your survey and all that brought in. But I guess my question is, do we have a handle on approximately when we start making some recommendations and when are we going to talk about those recommendations, in light of the shortfall?
Well, the idea is to take a year to do this, and make them, you know, take a year and, again, engage and, and come back to the board.
So we're talking about the 1819? 1819 year.
Because they...
No. The, all, all I was going to say is, there are really two pieces, and one... No. They, all, all I was going to say is, there are really two pieces. And one is, does the idea have merit? And that's really what we've been trying to tease out right now. If it does, if there's a way for us, you know, to, to get this done and continue to serve students as we serve them now, then we want to take whatever time we need to get that done. And that's, that's where we are right now. That's the piece we're in right now. Does it make sense? Is it workable? Can we accomplish this? Can we make this a success? Because we don't want it to end up like it ended up last time. But we have a pretty good understanding of, of how it can be made to work this round. But that, that's the place we're at now.
Yeah. And I, I've, I've been reflecting on Dr. Bob's question, comparing transportation's recommendation with O and M. And, and Dr. B., I mean, transportation really, there's really no cuts. The question is, is just a restructuring of the time, and are we willing and able to do that? I mean, O and M, you just saw, there's going to be four FTEs that will not be rehired, and you saw all of those other, you know, all of these really, I mean, real cuts, deep cuts, right?
Yeah, I get that. And, and, and I wasn't trying to compare apples to oranges. What I was trying to do was focus in on those, on that slide that showed the two other options that we did not see, where we had a $1.4 million shortfall, and then we had a plan to eliminate the entire $1.4 million, which resulted in, in this, and a great deal of feedback from the community. Then we had two other options, neither of which was all the entire 1.4 million, as I recall, but each option took a significant chunk with a little bit of change left over. And my, my sense of it is, we had the discussion is, well, we don't want to look at those. We want to take the whole 1.4 million. Except that maybe you could take another option that doesn't involve the bell system, at least those, of those two that, that we were shown, and okay, maybe we're going to be $300,000 in the hole, and maybe there's another way we can make that up down the road. But that seemed not to be part of the vision for transportation. It was this 1.4 million cut or, or bust. And all I'm trying to say is, if, so maybe it is apples and oranges. Maybe on, on, on O and M, we really don't have that many degrees of freedom, and this is the best we can do. But if we're willing to live with a $600,000 shortfall, even though that's the best we can do, maybe we could look a little more benignly on the transportation, not work, and, and, and not try to hit that 1.4 million all at once, if in fact, as Mr. Willis suggests, it has such a significant impact on the students' families and community. That's all I was getting at. Now, just, and then I'll shut up. Oh, no, I won't shut up. There were just a couple of other things. One, I've done the kind of qualitative research that Mr. Willis has done, and I would like now publicly to stand up and, because that's, that's a ton of work. And it, and it's not something that's done, matter of fact, qualitative research, as you know, especially teasing out themes like this, in some ways is much more difficult than running the numbers, just for the very nature of the data. So thank you very much for the hard work.
Well, actually, the, thank you. We appreciate that. Susan, at the School Improvement Institute, actually did all of the analysis work.
Okay, I take back. I take all that back. I second that.
I hated saying that to Michelle. Seriously, she did a phenomenal job.
Because, Dr. Bob, we, we all said, we want a one-page executive summary.
And I said, I couldn't do it.
There's a piano under your chair, write a symphony. The only, the only other thing was something I forgot to say last time, and that is, of the quantitative data, data that we had, I was wondering, and, and that's a whole ton of data we still have left. And I don't know if we're done mining that. If we are, then disregard my next comment. But if you look at the respondents, I'm not wondering if we might not have some valuable information if we disaggregate the data by respondent, because respondents identify themselves as parents, employees, community members, et cetera.
Students.
And about one quarter, if I'm not mistaken, somewhere 23 to 24 percent identified themselves as employees or community members, and then answered all the questions on the survey. And the reason I'm thinking it might be helpful to disaggregate by respondent is that if you have a question that says, well, how important is it to have, you know, public school transportation to you in, in your life? Well, if you have an employee, our employees don't take the bus, you know, or a community member. So, and, and you may have already done that, but that was not evident to me when I looked at the data. That's all I'm saying. And that might give us different answers.
Sure.
And I would hope that, just my comment is that, that going forward, the next step, within the next steps, the committee, whomever is going to be on that committee, will be looking at all of those type issues to see, you know, who we're working with and what the needs are. So that's my hope then, going forward. Anything else on that? No other questions? Okay. May I have approval of the minutes?
I don't.
Approval of the minutes from April 3, 2017?
So moved.
Is there any discussion on those minutes? Got to wake up now. Would you please call the roll?
Mrs. Pastor?
Aye.
Mrs. Jackson?
Aye.
Mr. Shaw?
Aye.
Mr. Adlin?
Aye.
Mr. Walton?
Aye.
Mrs. Ross?
Aye.
Thank you. We have now come to a place on our agenda that provides an opportunity for the members of the community who wish to address the board. As you know, we are all volunteers elected by you to oversee the development, implementation, and management of quality education for the students of Peoria Public Schools. The board of, the board welcomes your comments and suggestions relating to this goal. Recognizing that we all have our First Amendment rights of free speech, we ask that your comments be focused on those issues within the board's authority. There are some issues we are not at liberty to discuss in public, such as personnel and other executive session topics. However, if you have a specific personal concern that needs to be addressed, we will get a staff person to help you. In addition, board members are accessible outside of these meetings by telephone or emails, which are listed at the website, PSD150.org. We recognize that five minutes may not be enough time for some of you to express your thoughts. So we have installed a comment box for your convenience. Our board secretary will be collecting those comments after each board meeting and compiling them and sharing them with the board and superintendent. When you are recognized, please come to the podium and state your name for our records. Each speaker has five minutes, and no one under age 18 may address the board unless accompanied by a parent, guardian, or teacher without the full consent of the majority of the board. Our first speaker is Mr. Terry Knapp. Good evening.
Good evening. I'd like to congratulate the board, first of all, on listening to the public on this three-tier bell, bell schedule. If you look and study the history in the last seven years of why you're in trouble with transportation, it's because the previous boards have misspent the money. This board seems to be accountable. They, they were busing kids from around the corner, across the street, weren't being reimbursed for it, and that's where your money went. And I think you got to remember that. The other thing I'd like to say, I, I want to congratulate you on your surveying. I was very impressed with your overall attitude toward the public's comments. Seven years ago, when they closed Woodruff High School, they didn't even go to the community and survey the community on the North Side. Never went, never had a survey, never asked for questions or input from the community. And people came to this podium and told you that the increased busing of all the Woodruff kids to Manuel and Central, when the, none of them were bused, would, would be a financial hardship on this district. And now you're sitting here, not realizing why you're in a deficit spending situation. Obviously, the state also withdrew some of their support for the busing program. But you, you, you must realize that your attitude this time is a good attitude. And I, and I congratulate you on this. There's no rush to judgment this time. Last time, there was a lady who ran for the Board of Education, new board member, came to our groups and said that she would not vote in, in any way, shape, or form to close a high school. She was the deciding vote, four to three. She got on the board, absolutely lied to the public, ran for the school board, got on the school board, and cast the deciding votes, four to three, to close Woodruff High School. And now all those kids have been bused. I've asked you to survey the North Side kids. Are they even participating in our school system anymore? Because they had to get on a bus to go to Manuel and Central. I think many of these altercations that are occurring in Central and Manuel are a result of the Woodruff kids being bused into a foreign neighborhood with foreign gangs involved in various situations that they were not involved with before. And I don't think any of you have surveyed it or looked at it. Woodruff High School should never have been closed. Averyville Kingman Neighborhood Association, which is oldest in Peoria, should never have been disenfranchised from the rest of the community and ignored, not even surveyed when you closed Woodruff High School. And now we sit there with the charter high school, the, the high school part of it can't even draw flies. Graduate 40 kids, 39 kids, 38 kids. What kind of a STEM curriculum can you have with 45 or 35 kids in a senior class, junior class, sophomore class in a high school? People have been hoodwinked with that situation. You give them $5.2 million for what? Louisville Slugger, I want to mention that. I went out to a ballgame yesterday at the Louisville Slugger complex. If you haven't been out there, go out there. Bradley's playing their home games out there. Beautiful facility. The Peterson family from Canton, who was, Mr. Peterson was in the nursing home industry, put millions of dollars into that complex out there. The same, same thing can be done with the stadium if you seek a, a significant person to go in there and do this. Unbelievable complex. The stadium has the capacity to be the same type of complex. I urge you to keep working with this, you know, getting involved with Nike and Adidas and trying to get them to come in here and revitalize the stadium. Mr. Brookhart's brown baguette or fine arts thing the other day, phenomenal. But I re, I remind you that the last seven years, our fine arts program, bans and so forth have decayed. They're gone because of leadership of the board in the last seven years and the administration that was here in the past. I want to applaud again, Dr. Crot for her efforts to bring it back. It won't come immediately, but it's got to come. The fine arts is where test scores improve. Thank you.
Thank you. Any response to audience participation? Any response? Oh, Mr. Knapp, I believe, were you instrumental in, in assisting to develop the chess club?
Yes.
I just want to, we, we talked about that earlier, and I just want to make sure.
The teaching union and the Board of Education did that, and we, we put chess sets in every school in the district.
I thought you were, you were the initiator of that. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, information items. The first reading of an update policy, seven colon 140, search and seizure, and eight colon 30, community relations, visitors to, visitors to conduct on school grounds. You got it all. Who wrote this?
Visitors to and conduct on school grounds.
Okay, visitors to and conduct on school grounds. Okay.
Mr. Shaw?
Mr. Shaw?
All right. So these are, again, offered for first reading, policy number seven colon 140, search and seizure, cleaned up some language and clarified that school officials may not demand a student's social media password. So that was just, in case that was ambiguous to anyone, any school officials. And, but they may require information from social media during the course of an investigation. So they can't get your password, but you may be required to turn over some information.
Okay.
Item, policy number eight, colon 30, community relations, again, cleans up some language and covers special case situation, special case visitors, such as convicted child sex offenders and exclusive bargaining representative agents. So those, those were the things that they covered.
Okay. And then number two, why don't you just go ahead with second reading, an update policy, seven colon 240?
So here, we removed the language about the random drug testing at the request of the board. So the board was not interested in adding a random drug testing policy, so we removed that from the policy.
And this is for students, right?
This is.
To be clarified.
This is.
Okay. All right. Any questions of those policy changes?
I have it. Just a quick question. On the, the search and seizure, how does cell phones fit in on that? Can we confiscate a cell phone? Can we search it?
Mr. Redberg is there?
That's the lawyer, the lawyer?
What's that?
Lawyer, the lawyer. Never mind, it's an old comic strip.
No, I hadn't heard of that one. This policy doesn't deal specifically with, with cell phones. I mean, I think we deal with that, with that elsewhere. But the, the main reason for the change in this policy is the language about the social media thing, which is, which was required by statute. So this language is required to be in. So that's the primary motivating factor for the change.
Anything else on policies? Thank you. Proposed expenditures over $2,500. Any questions of Mr. Willis? Seeing none, report a request under the Freedom of Information Act and the status of those requests. Dr. Carat?
Thank you, President Ross. Since our last board meeting, which was held on April 3, we have not received any new requests. There was one pending request noted on April 3. This request was filled. So to date, we have received 16 requests for this calendar year at a cost of $6,419.
Thank you. The consent agenda, action item.
The consent agenda consists of the following items this evening. Item number one, gifts to the school district this meeting, $4,190. Year-to-date, $202,918.13. Item number two is the payment of bills. Item number three is the payment for travel. Item four is the human resources report. Item five is the administrator compensation schedule and placement guidelines. Item number six is the dedication of the right-of-way to the city of Peoria for Latrobe Street Improvement Project, nearby Treewind School. Item number seven is an intergovernmental agreement with the Peoria Park District. Item number eight is the Orton-Gillingham training. Item number nine is the acceptance of the canvas of election return. Item number 10 is parking lot repairs and maintenance for Zone 1. Item 11 is parking lot repairs and maintenance for Zone 2. And item number 12 is the approval of the program budget committee operations and maintenance fund recommendations for an estimated savings totaling $921,520. And that is the entirety of the consent agenda.
Thank you. With that recommendation, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, are there any, I was supposed to do that first. Are there any items that any board member would like, pull for a separate vote? What number, sir?
Number five. Administrator compensation schedule and placement guidelines.
Item nine.
Item number nine? Okay, any other items? Okay, are there any, is there any discussion on any items other than five and nine?
I think we need to move it first, right?
We did. We didn't move the second. You made a motion.
I second it.
Okay. Friendly amendment that it excludes items five and nine?
Okay, sorry. Friendly amendment. Comments or questions on five and nine? Would you, I mean, not five and nine, everything except five and nine, sorry. Would you call the roll, please?
Mrs. Pastor?
Aye.
Mrs. Jackson?
Aye.
Aye.
Dr. Davidson, Aviles.
Aye.
Mr. Adler.
Aye.
Mr. Shaw.
Aye.
Mr. Walter.
Aye.
Mrs. Ross.
Aye.
Seven ayes, motion carry.
Thank you. Let's start with item number five.
Yeah, I had, I had a couple of questions, and maybe Dr. Wright can help me with this or.
Did you want to make the motion since we pulled it out of the motion? Motion second and then question.
Basically, I had questions, but I have a motion I would like to table this till the next meeting. There's some questions I have about this. Would be my motion.
Okay.
And if I do that, they have to vote on it now, though, don't they?
Yes.
So I wanted, that's why I wanted to do the questions first, because I may not have to make that motion if I get some of my questions answered.
It should have been in the rest of the motions then. Okay. I'm looking to you for guidance. Who wants the questions answered?
I had a motion to table.
He didn't motion it yet. He said he wanted to ask questions first.
I, if the board, I think, wants to deal with this tonight, I think they'll let Mr. Walter ask his questions.
It was the board's pleasure.
Let's hear the questions.
Let's hear the questions.
Thank you. We did get a printout of an administrator's salary schedule. I guess the questions I have are twofold. This adequately describes all the principals, alternative ed coordinators. It doesn't have anything on here, on the one that I had printed out, about central administrators that are here. And I'm trying to extrapolate how we place them on this schedule and what their cost would be. I'd be more comfortable seeing what that cost was going to be. That's the first question. The second one was, in the past, all of those positions, which would include everybody but the superintendent, were one-year agreements. And I wondered if that was going to be the continuing pattern and what the amount was. I'd feel more comfortable seeing those spelled out before I voted on it, because basically, we're voting on them blind. I don't see them here unless there was a piece out of my ninety things that I printed out that didn't print out for this, so.
Now, I think what, Dr. Eagle Jack, would you, because I think that's only, the only ones that are, that we're talking about are principals, assistant principals, and coordinator. Am I correct?
Correct.
Others haven't come. No plan, no plan has come.
That would clear it up for me if that's the intent. If it was just these.
Yeah, it's just these on here. And these are already aligned with the teacher's salary, which, as you know, is very, very confusing. And when it's aligned with the teacher's salary schedule, this teacher's salary, the teachers' union essentially bargains for the administrators by any agreements that they reach. So this time around, and like most other districts, they like to decouple the salary schedule from the teachers and let it stand alone when it comes to compensation, essentially. Plus, it has all kinds of structural flaws built into them that even principals themselves complained, and we're trying to cure those, those issues.
And Mr. Walters, the administrators will be presented to the board at the next board meeting.
Okay, that clarify. Here's what my confusion was. On the proposed action, authorizes the administration to convert the salary of current administrators. That, to me, was broader than what is presented here. So that's what I just wanted to clarify.
Gotcha.
Because you're all still administrators, the lovers who are sitting there and smiling and having to stay here until later, nine o'clock. You're still administrators. And so when I saw that, it wasn't just a principal. I just wanted to clarify.
Gotcha. You should have said building administrators. So, okay.
That's my, that answers my question.
Thank you. So you win that?
I will. Now, I think you should entertain a motion to adopt item number five.
May I have a motion?
So move.
Second.
Okay, would you please call a roll if there are no more questions?
Mrs. Castick.
Aye.
Aye.
Dr. Davidson, Aviles.
Aye.
Mr. Adler.
Aye.
Mr. Shaw.
Aye.
Mr. Walter.
Aye.
Mrs. Ross.
Aye.
Seven ayes, motion carry.
I move that we adopt item number nine, the canvas of election return.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Mr., you were the one that.
Yes, and he just left. I was going to, I think he just went to the restroom.
Yeah, I had invited him to, so I could introduce him. But we can introduce you, so if you want.
Who are you again?
So, yes. It looks like I'm back again. And I also, I wanted to abstain from item number nine. It just felt weird to vote on my own election results. So I'm going to abstain from that. But again, congratulations to Mr. Wilson when he comes back.
Yes, congratulations to you. And Mr. Gregory Wilson, if he steps back in, we will recognize him as well. He brought little Gregory with him, I guess. So he probably had a potty break or something. So can we, we have a first and a second, a motion and a second. Could we call the roll, please?
Mrs. Castick.
Aye.
Mrs. Jackson.
Aye.
Dr. Davidson, Aviles.
Aye.
Mr. Shaw.
Abstain.
Mr. Adler.
Aye.
Mr. Wagner.
No. Said no.
Okay.
Mrs. Ross.
Aye.
Thank you. Five ayes, motion carry. Okay. Okay. Throw me off all the time. Okay. All right, Mr. Wilson, you just walked back in along with young Mr. Wilson here. We just called your name to it. Welcome you to the board. And would you like to have anything, have a word or two?
Wait, wait.
He's ready to go. And I'm sorry we had to keep you so long.
No, no problem, no problem.
Mr. Gregory Wilson.
I didn't have any, hello, first off. You know, good evening. I didn't have anything prepared to talk about. I said I was going to get up here, speak from the heart. I'm very passionate about making a positive impact on all lives. That has led me to doing great things in our community. I look forward to working with everyone on the board, our superintendent, and everyone, every piece, and everyone that makes Peoria Public Schools possible. And I look forward to making it one of the best districts in central Illinois. So, thank you.
Did he have anything he wanted to add? Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Liberation items. Where did you go down to the number one?
I went through twelve, so you were on thirteen.
Okay. Consideration of a resolution authorizing note and line of credit. Mr. Willis, who you want, what's that proposed action?
Just real briefly, this particular time of year, our cash levels are not quite what we'd prefer them to be. A lot of that has to do with our fund balances in general, and our finances in general aren't as positive as we will make them soon. Because of that, we've got some delayed state payments and tax monies aren't in yet. Makes it necessary for us to request a view, a line of credit, just to make sure that everything from a day-to-day operation goes without a glitch, and that if we should need to borrow some cash, it's in place for us to do.
Is there a motion and a second?
I move that we adopt item thirteen, a resolution authorizing note and line of credit not to exceed $10 million to be secured by property taxes levied in 2016 educational purposes.
Second.
Any comments?
Quick question. What happens if we don't do this?
If we don't do it, right now, we have $8 million of state payments that we're waiting to receive. I would say that paying our bills, we put in the hands of the state instead of putting it in our own hands.
Oh, that'll solve things. Thank you. You're fine.
And we're scheduled to get, I was told, the payments at the end of this month.
Right now, I think when we look today, there was a little over $1 million that's in the hopper of that eight, but that still leaves $7 million that we haven't received. This time last year, we'd received it. So this time last year, we weren't having this conversation.
And if it makes you feel any better, for the last fifteen years, it's been similar. We've always had to have something in the hopper because the state, you know, were slow in giving us the tax money that they were, which is why we created the working cash fund. Now, in borrowing that money, would it be borrowed from the working cash fund or?
No. And, and, and the working cash fund is basically being taxed or used right now because, remember, our balances, when we summarize our finances at the end of the year, we have negative balances in operations and maintenance, we have negative balances in education, we have negative balances in transportation, and the working cash funds makes those whole. So that totals almost $20 million in and of itself. And so the working cash fund basically is used just to make our monies whole at the end of the year.
That's what I thought. I know that we had the $38 million, and we wanted to borrow from ourselves and pay ourselves back so that this wouldn't happen. That's why we had created that in the past.
And the long and short is, that's not quite enough. That's, you know, we really need the revenue that we've been, that's been shortfall revenue for us. That just reinforces that we really need that.
Thank you. Mr. Walter.
I just want to speak in support of this. I do understand there is a way, you could do a partial abolishment of the working cash fund to free up some cash. I would prefer we do it the way you're recommending. I think this is more financially prudent to do it. So I'm speaking in support.
No other questions? May I, you call the roll, please?
Mrs. Castick.
Aye.
Mrs. Jackson.
Aye.
Dr. Davidson, Aviles.
Aye.
Mr. Shaw.
Aye.
Mr. Adler.
Aye.
Mr. Walter.
Aye.
Mrs. Ross.
Aye.
Seven ayes, motion carry.
Number fourteen, consideration of resolution providing for the issue of not to exceed $29 million of general obligation bonds, alternative revenue sources.
In short, this just kind of, this resolution really just spells out the details of the bond sale process and gives, Stifel Nicolaus, Kevin Hyatt is here representing them tonight, gives them basically their marching orders on selling our bonds and maximizing how much we get and how little interest we get. So, and this is the last resolution needed for us to do the bond sale.
May I have a motion and a second on that?
So move.
Second.
Any questions? Questions or comments?
Mrs. Castick. Mrs. Jackson.
Aye.
Dr. Davidson, Aviles.
Aye.
Mr. Adler.
Aye.
Mr. Shaw.
Aye.
Mr. Walter.
Aye.
Mrs. Ross.
Aye.
Seven ayes, motion carry.
Number fifteen, suspension reviews.
That the suspension review listed on the report dated April 24, 2017, be approved as amended.
Second.
Would you call the roll?
Mrs. Castick.
Aye.
Mrs. Jackson.
Aye.
Dr. Davidson, Aviles.
Aye.
Mr. Adler.
Aye.
Mr. Shaw.
Aye.
Mr. Walter.
Aye.
Mrs. Ross.
Aye.
Seven ayes, motion carry.
And expulsions?
That the expulsions listed on the report dated April 24, 2017, be approved as presented.
Second.
Mrs. Castick.
Aye.
Mrs. Jackson.
Aye.
Dr. Davidson, Aviles.
Aye.
Mr. Shaw.
Aye.
Mr. Adler.
Aye.
Mr. Walter.
Aye.
Mrs. Ross.
Aye.
Seven ayes, motion carry.
Thank you. Presentation and suggestions by board members.
I have a brief.
You just turned your mic off.
I just turned it off.
Turn it off, thank you.
Sir, Mr. I had a terrific time this weekend at the kindergarten expo, for lack of a better term, at Woodruff. And again, as many of you know, but I'm going to say it again publicly, despite the fact that she keeps telling me not to, I have been married to the best kindergarten teacher on the planet for over thirty years. You don't last that long and not get to know kindergarten at least a little bit. These are the men and women who will jokingly put the bumper sticker on their car, "You don't scare me. I teach kindergarten." I got a chance to see some of these youngsters, the ones that are coming up, maybe the little youngsters who are going to be winning the K, two and three literacy awards, Young Authors Awards, bright little eyes running around. I have to say, props to Dr. J. Man, that thing was run great. And those kids had, and you know what? I was this far away from getting my own balloon hat and getting my face painted. They had some pros there. And the kids had a great time. I got a chance to meet some parents and families who couldn't be more thrilled that their youngsters are coming to Peoria Public School Kindergartens. Just absolutely, well, I picked this up here, Head Start Matters, because it, and the only other thing I wanted to say about it is that, and this is something my friend, Mr. Walter, we might want to consider in our sojourns to schools around the district that we have done, is that we ought to have a chance to visit the community agencies that support the work we do as public educators. And they were all set up on one side of the auditorium or the gym there. And it's people like Boys and Girls Clubs, Head Start, library, the food bank, the hospitals, all of our community partners who help us do the very important work that we do. And without them, I don't think we could be as effective as we are. So it was really a terrific time. It was, and just to see, I'd never seen that many people under three feet tall. It's just.
Thank you. Any, Mr. Walter?
Just one other. I had a visit on Saturday also. I went down to the Earth Day Celebration and Science Matters. And at the very end of that celebration was the Peoria Foundation. We had a group that was there. And while everybody tried to be non-political, it's impossible to do that when you have an administration in Washington that denies climate and is gutting the EPA. It was proud to hear people there that were willing to stand up and say, and as people who support public education, science does matter. And it is important that we don't lose that message in trying to be politically correct. So if I offend anyone in the audience, I really don't care, because we do have to defend education and science, and it's really important. I was proud that our group was there as part of that presentation. And so, it's my editorial for tonight. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other presentation or suggestions by board members? Okay, reports from board committees. Mr. Shaw?
Just want to give you the next policy committee meeting will be May 17th, Wednesday, May 17th, at 9:30 a.m.
Okay. Anything else? Seeing none?
President Ross, I move that we adjourn.
Fifteen minutes overtime.